Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the January fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Bob Jantsch of the First United Methodist Church and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Let us pray. We come, oh God, tonight, all having been created out of your love and existing this day and every day for your purposes. We're grateful for your call of us here tonight. We're grateful for these, our leaders of this community, for the citizens who've gathered to do the business of our town and city. We pray your blessings upon the conversations and the decisions that are made here that all might represent your will for us at this time in our history. We pray for those who govern us locally and in our state and nation and even for the leaders of the world, that in these troubled days, we might all seek more peaceful solutions to all of our problems as a way of living together and finding our way forward. We pray for those who are troubled. We pray for those who are lonely. We pray for our town, our neighbors, our friends, those who will become our friends. Blessed now, us and all your people this night, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarran?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
At this time, we'll conduct the public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the two thousand and thirteen recreational trail grant program grant. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council about the...
Not the time, John.
You want to talk about the trail grant?
No.
Okay. One minute, please, sir.
Okay.
Anyone here on that matter? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. The next hearing we'll conduct at this time will be the public hearing to receive input for the public, from the public regarding the two thousand and thirteen land and water conservation fund grant. Anyone here that would like to address the council about that grant program? Seeing none, that matter will close. The next item of business is the presentations and proclamations? None this evening?
None tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next part of the agenda is the visitor section of the agenda. That is the opportunity for people to address the council about non-agended items. If you would come forward at this time and state your name and your business, and we would ask that people limit their comments to three minutes, please. Three minutes.
I'm John Turneyus. My wife and I now reside in the Spanish Cove Retirement Village. My concern is that we have enough safety people available for various disasters that happen. I'd like to remind you to begin with that a couple of years ago, after the tornado went through Piedmont, they had to have outside law enforcement to help them, including some from Yukon. Also point out to you that there are other human disasters that happen that require law enforcement. If you attended the Yukon Public School Board meeting last night, you heard Superintendent Denton say that he was very pleased with the assistance that the schools received about a month ago because the local police were there at the school buildings to help with security. I believe I've distributed to you a formal letter or letter to the editor, and you can get the details, but I give you an example. I have a granddaughter who resides in north Las Vegas. You may recall about two months ago, a ten-year-old girl was kidnapped in Las Vegas. There was a countrywide search for that ten-year-old girl. Her body was found about one mile from my granddaughter's home. So after the events in Newton, Connecticut, my granddaughter, as usual, had three daughters to take to two different school buildings. At one of those school buildings, there was a man in camouflage clothes walking up and down the sidewalk. My daughter, my granddaughter, may be considered paranoid. She wouldn't let her children out there because she was worried about whether it was safe or not. Now, if there had been a police uniformed person walking the sidewalk, it would have been a different situation. We just do not want self-appointed vigilantes helping out as much as maybe they're needed, and maybe they have good positive motives, but we need the kind of people that can be trusted to take care of our children. Therefore, I appreciate the fact that the Yukon Police Department was available. Apparently, everything was cared for as needed to be, and I hope that you approve of their performance at that time and that you will give them credit for what they did.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. I think it is important to make sure that our community's safe, and your point is well taken. Anyone else like to address the council at this time about a non-agended item? Anyone like to address the council about a non-agended item? Seeing no other visitors, at this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as YMA. The first item is item one A, the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of January the second, two thousand and thirteen, and two A...
No.
Separated item.
First.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Next item is two A. Present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, Yukon Municipal Authority Audit Financial Report is prepared by Darrell S. White, CPA.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Darrell.
Mr. White here this evening? Mr. White, would you like to provide comments to the council?
Oh, yeah, I'll try to be brief and kind of touch on the highlights. First of all, we were real happy to be able to offer you guys audit services this year. We felt like the audit went extremely well, especially for a first-year audit, and I think one of the things that needs to be kind of pointed out, you know, right up front, you know, before I get into my comments, is that we got extremely good cooperation from all the staff. There was really never an instance where that we, you know, needed something or asked for something that we didn't get it. And I think kind of prefacing that, you know, is important to kind of keep in mind that any system is really ought to be kind of a work in progress. I would certainly say that's where we're at, you know, today. At the same time, generally, what we try to do as part of our audit procedures is to make a determination, really answering two very basic questions. First of all, is the system that's in place adequate considering the resources, size of the organization? And secondly, is it better than it was the prior year? And that's kind of the baseline that we use in our procedures, you know, recognizing that no system is perfect and, you know, but in this, you know, era age, you know, we feel pretty strongly that that's something that the users of financial statements really not only request but require, that basically we have a system that accurately reflects our operations, you know, that basically provides some basic safeguards of city assets and is also transparent. And one of the things that, you know, we feel like that basically we've got all the pieces in place, you know, to have a really good system. I'll just kind of touch on kind of some highlights of our reports. We issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, that they were, you know, fairly or not materially misstated in accordance with government audit standards and generally accepted accounting principles. The...I think that one of the things that really gave me some, you know, problem, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, I feel like we've got, you know, one of the best audit staffs, and we do primarily governmental audits, do more governmental audits than anything else, and so we get to see a lot of different comparisons. And one of the things that I think really gave us, you know, we had some rather spirited discussions, was that we were probably, without any question, much more thorough and comprehensive in our procedures than you've ever had before. And so you have to make some judgments about when that you probably turn some rocks over that's never been turned over, you know, how to basically present those and kind of relatively speaking, you know, given the reports that's been given by prior auditors in the, in prior years. And so, but the thing that basically led us to our unqualified opinion, really, two things. One was that we, that all of the proposed adjusting journal entries that we proposed were accepted and agreed upon by both accounting consultant and management. The other thing was that we felt like that the basic procedures of the city in every single department are very strong, you know, we've got a really good base to work for. The only place that we encountered any difficulty at all was there was things that in the past have not been recorded in your general ledger and were basically relied upon to be brought in at the end of the year, and that was probably a big part of the reason why we had to restate last year's audit, as also the only thing that we found to basically mention today. Kind of going into, I won't go through over all the numbers because basically we're six months past the deal, but I did want to kind of point out some highlights. Over on page three, basically, it tells us what kind of our, this is a management discussion analysis, not actually part of the financial statements, and I think a real good place to basically kind of go through because the purpose of the management discussion analysis is to put the financial statements in a form that laypeople can understand, not accounting people. If you look kind of right in the middle, under the financial summary, we had a total increase this year of net assets, basically net income of all funds of two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. You know, that's about as close to break even as you can, as you can get.
Sir, what page are you on?
Page three. It's actually, yes, page three. It's going to be, it's going to be the page right after our audit report. The first two pages aren't numbered. So our audit opinion, and then it starts with the management discussion analysis.
Okay. I thought you said the number two hundred and six thousand? Oh, there it is.
Two hundred and six thousand, yeah, two hundred and six thousand, one seventy.
Thank you.
Kind of breaking that down a little bit more, if we look at, on page six, gives a little bit more detail and looks at both governmental activities and business-type activities and also has comparative to last year. And I will kind of preface that last year, we had a, was the year that we had to bring in unfunded pension liabilities, and so a lot of our comparative numbers are really a little bit biased. But the, if you look under governmental activities, we actually had a surplus before transfers of eight hundred and fifteen thousand on governmental activities versus a one-point-three-million-dollar deficit last year. The bulk of last year's deficit was bringing that unfunded liabilities in. But overall, if you look at the kind of bottom of that page, revenues were particularly strong, especially sales tax. All revenues were up eighteen percent, and our overall expenses were down twenty-six percent, of which about twenty-four percent of that is accounted for by the pension benefits. But we actually, that's the right trend to have, basically revenues going up and expenses staying stable or going down. Next area that I kind of want to point out was one of the evaluations that on page twenty-eight, one of the evaluations that we do as part of our procedures is kind of make some determin, some basic determinations about where the city's at and where the city may be going. And one of the things that is, I think, extremely important, and we're finding, and we will discuss this each year as we do the audit, is that there's a lot of, if you look at all those cities in Oklahoma, they were all formed about the same time, which means that we've got an infrastructure which is rather aged and getting older. And so a lot, in almost every instance, we're seeing, and particularly on the utility side and your basic infrastructure, street and alleys, those type of things, we're seeing, you know, more, a trend of expenses accelerating pretty rapidly, basically due to having to replace that aged infrastructure. But one kind of good way for us to evaluate kind of where you're at is comparing the total fixed assets to accumulated depreciation. And if, always keep in mind that basically a good target is if we're fifty percent depreciated or less, that generally means that we've got a relatively good infrastructure in place and a relatively new. And so on the top, that top one, this is just on governmental activities, just kind of give you an idea, we've got ninety-two million dollars of capital assets. We are almost exactly half depreciated, fifty percent, right where we should be. That is a number that is basically quite a bit better than most comparable cities this size. The other thing we look at is basically how fast you're depreciating assets compared to adding assets. You know, this is just one year, but that next column, basically, we put eight million dollars worth of assets into service and only depreciated three million. And so should that trend continue, we would basically, we would basically stay at or below that fifty percent, you know, for the foreseeable future. And if we flip through all of the breakdowns, business-type activities, governmental activities, they're all basically right, right on there. But I think that that has a, it kind of gives us a good indication that, you know, prior city councils have not mined the city of their assets, and we don't probably have a whole lot of catching up to do in terms of... The big thing that, that happens today is that, you know, a trash truck costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, you know, replacing a six-inch water line, you know, can easily go for a mile, easily go to a million dollars. Nothing's cheap today. And so kind of in our evaluation, in addition to the procedures that we apply to basically to see how that the reporting system happens, we also try to identify any areas that we see as relative risk. That's kind of the highlights on the financial part. There is, we're required to and will be submitting sometime in the next thirty days, a communication to a governing body that basically just, just basically talks about everything that I've talked about, how the audit went, if we encountered any problem. As part of that, we're required to basically identify the disclosure that is of most significance, and this is the same disclosure on about every city. On page thirty-five, start is where we start talking about our different retirement systems and what their funding progress is. With that getting into all the details of, you know, that's been a problem for governments regardless, you know, local all the way to federal level, is basically we've promised benefits to employees and didn't really fund them currently, kind of kicked the can down the road, so to speak. With you guys in particular, the main retirement plan, Oklahoma Municipal Retirement System, you are sixty-five percent funded roughly today. That's not a number that I think is a great place to be, but it's a lot better than a lot of people are at today. The important thing in talking to Grayson is that they've recognized that as an area that they basically are addressing and doing some things going down the road to basically fix that problem. And so the good news is that basically from this point forward, actually last year forward, we are recognizing all of our expenses as they, as they're incurred rather than basically as we pay them. The last thing that I was going to bring, or last two things, are kind of some of the areas that we feel like that there's, there's areas that improvements can be made in the system. First is the budgetary system, you know, formulating the budget and tracking the budget through the years actually is a rather good process here. We do have had some indications, mostly because the system was kind of in a process of change in a lot of areas that we had some supplemental appropriations that really should have been made that didn't get made due to, due to adjusting entries. One of the things that we feel like that basically at this point, we feel like that comparing the system this year to the prior years is really no comparison. It is way, way better. My role is not to basically make a judgment on prior audits or prior, but I can tell you that from what we saw of prior years, I would, it would have been very difficult for me to give a real good report. It wouldn't have been a bad report, but there was some, there was some rather major areas, in our opinion, that needed to be addressed, one being budgetary system, the other being how we recognize debt. The good news is that a lot of those, and in the process, basically, we changed city managers, we had some changes in personnel and accounting consultants, and at the time, even looking at from the time that we did our audit back in December, starting in December, from the end of the year, we could tell that there was significant improvements that had been made, visited with all the people involved about what was going to be done in the future, and we feel real confident that by the time we get to this point next year, that it will be, you know, a system that we can all be proud of. You know, the budget was one area we did find back on, this will be the last two pages or last three pages, a required report on governmental audits is, we have to make an assessment, not an opinion, but basically evaluate both internal control and compliance. We did have one internal control finding, and that had to do with, had to do with recognizing or how we recognize both acquisitions and disposals of fixed assets. We've visited with both management and accounting consultant, and that was something that was in process of being fixed and bettered as we do, but we really had no choice. I really hated to even put, you know, considering how much better the system is, in my opinion, today than it was a year ago, it was really difficult for me to even, even put that as a finding, but my hands were kind of tied as of the end of the year. It was a condition that did exist. We did not put the budgetary, we had two departments basically that had a, that had expenditures over appropriations. We did not put that as a finding on a yellow book report, primarily because if that, we wouldn't have had some adjusting entries in this process in place, we wouldn't have that to begin with. So it really didn't feel like that rose to the level of having to be reported. That's kind of my brief overview. Like I said, I really feel strongly that basically get this system given another year is going to be a very good system. And I think that, you know, this time next year, hopefully a little earlier than this time next year, you know, as we, as we report on that, we'll be able to basically say that all of the things that, you know, we felt like needed to be improved had been improved over the years, over this last year, and that we really don't, we really don't have any strong reservations about the system being able to capture the transactions as they were. And like I said, if we really break this down to the individual process level or individual person level, we've really got, you know, maybe one of the best top-to-bottom groups of people in places that I've seen in any city. We've got some very competent people, people that take their job very seriously, conscientious about what they do, and certainly express a willingness to get better. And so that's, that's the tools that we want in place to basically make a system that, you know, that just, just runs very well. So be more than happy to answer any questions that anybody had.
Thank you, sir, for the report. Let's start, Mr. Opitz?
Yes, you mentioned a while ago about actually the employment, employee retirement? Yes, sir. And you said that that number, that sixty-five percent, you know, was better than some, but maybe not what it should be. What do you think that number should be?
Well, I mean, ideally, as auditor, I'd like to see it at a hundred percent. You know, that's, that's not really realistic in the systems we have. We've got several cities that are really close to fifty percent, and that, to me, is dangerous when you look at, at the liquidity needs to make that catch up. You guys are going to be gaining on that gradually, both through a combination of contributions that are in excess of our, in excess of our needs, and some changes in basically who's, who is eligible and how you're eligible, not doing some things that contributed to that, like buying extra years of employment and things like that. You know, a number that I would feel a lot more comfortable about, if we were at seventy percent, I'd feel, I'd feel real good. I don't see that as being a super high risk, but I don't see it as being an area not worthy of consideration either.
Anything else, Mr. Opitz?
Everything that you saw then was fairly transparent?
Exceptionally transparent. Yes, we, we had, like I said, we, we, we had several instances where different people told us that basically they were a little hesitant about, you know, us coming in, we're new auditors, asked some questions and looked at things from some different perspectives than had ever been looked for, and in no instance did we even get a hesitation from anybody about, you know, and that definitely contributed to us being able to do a really good audit.
And you was treated like that in every department?
Every single department, yes, sir.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Mr. Smith?
Just one question. At our current rate, is there a projection of how long it would take us to get into that seventy percent range?
You know, it's, it's hard, me not being actuary for one thing, and not really knowing, you almost have to have a crystal ball to know who's going to retire when and things like that. You know, I would say that basically over the next ten years, you know, we should, if things continue to go like they are, we should be, you know, between seventy and seventy-five percent, you know, at current contribution levels.
And at sixty-five percent, there's no real risk?
No. The other thing too is you've got to remember, one of the things that's really been hurting our contribution rate is it's, it is actuarially figured based on a whole bunch of assumptions that nobody really knows the answer to, like what the effective rate of return is going to be in the stock market. That has been, because the stock market has not been a particularly great investment over the last ten or twelve years, that's actually hurting our funding percentage. If we got to a more historical level of performance of the stock market, we could be at sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent, just based on increased, you know, increased rates of returns from those investments.
The sixty-five percent then is still a stable projection, though, right?
Yes.
As to where we're at?
I don't see how that basically, when you break that down, when the OMRF basically is a multiemployer plan, and we know the actuary pretty, pretty well, and I basically have grilled them a little bit about basically what could go wrong, you know, because if we dropped on some of these lower, then it, then it raises some additional risk for us. And they feel like that the projections that they're making on the return on investment side of that are probably not going to be, are probably lower than what they would likely be by the time many of these people retire. And the question is, is basically when does that turn around? You know, we've got, we've got CDs paying, you know, point nothing percent. That kind of sets the tone for everything else. Um, uh, that kinda sets the tone for everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Gerba?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. McCarron?
Yeah, I don't believe I have any questions. Thank you.
What is an unqualified opinion?
Okay, that's, uh, that's actually great. That, that's what you want.
No qualifiers.
Um, the, that, that's, this is the last unqualified opinion we'll ever get, because next year, the same terminology is going to be called an unmodified opinion, uh, which I think is actually more descriptive. Uh, basically, an unqualified opinion, it means that there are, are no qualifications or exceptions to our opinion. Uh, if we had something like you had, uh, had failed to include one of your required funds, then we would have said, then our opinion would have said, except for the effects of that, uh, we believe that you're, you're not materially misstated. So when you have, when you have no exceptions, that, that's, 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 that's what you want to have.
So the A, B, and C, we got an A?
Yeah, uh, A, I would say, yeah.
Okay. No other questions? We appreciate your time, sir. Thank you.
Russ, do you have anything to offer?
Nothing directly to offer. We do appreciate Daryl coming in, um, you know, with kind of the gates in last minute and everything that's going on. We do appreciate them coming in, getting the done, and moving forward.
Mayor, I will state publicly that we went around the table right after the fir- at the first staff meeting, right after the first of the year, and when it came, and we were all stating what we were thankful for as it related to the city. And, uh, Michael, uh, as our city treasurer and chief financial officer, uh, I asked Michael, what are you thankful for? And he, he looked at me and he says, well, I'm thankful for, uh, Russ and Daryl. So, uh, we appreciate y'all and what you do for the city and, and, uh, uh, we, we think we're gonna have a, a great financial team for a long time.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for the great report. There's no further, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn. Is the, from the Y M A and reconvene as the Yukon City Council, the first item is the consent doc- this item is placed on the agenda as Yukon City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A, the minutes of the regular meeting of January the second, two thousand and thirteen; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents; C, the submittal of a grant application for the two thousand and thirteen Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department, Department, Recreation Department Recreational Trails Program Grant; D, the submittal of a grant application for the two thousand and thirteen Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant; and E, setting the date of the next regular meeting of the council meeting, next regular council meeting for February fifth, two thousand and thirteen, seven P M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Next item is item two, and that'd be the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening.
Thank you, sir. Item three is to present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, City of Yukon Audit Financial Report is prepared by Daryl White, C P A.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The next item is four, and that's consider accepting the Grace Pentecostal Church of God Waterline Improvements Project and placing the maintenance bond into effect as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Next item is five, and that's consider accepting the Northwest Tenth Street Office Park Sanitary Silver Improvement Project and placing the maintenance bond into effect as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is six, and that's consider authorizing brewer, brewer construction to install a concrete drainage flume to connect the east end of Linda Lane into the existing flume located at Wagner Lake Estates at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, as recommended by the city engineer, to be play- paid from the capital improvement fund.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The item, next item we're actually gonna take is item eight. We'll take it up and then go to seven and then, or eight A, and then follow through with seven and nine. Item eight, item eight is to consider approving ordinance number one, two, eight, six, an ordinance which provides amendment to the court of ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending certain ordinances for the addition of definition-setting fees by resolution by the City Council of the City of Yukon and providing substantive procedural penalties regarding domestic animals, wild animals, animal, animals, dangerous animals, animals owned, animal caretakers, feral animals, specifically feral cat communities, their care and their caretakers, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. A second.
I'll, uh, second it, so we can discuss it.
Start our discussion, um, let's start with Mr. McCarron, and then I'll go down from Mr. Opitz back down to Mr. McCarron. So Mr. Care- Mr. McCarron?
Okay. The, uh, about eight months ago, uh, not eight months ago, four months ago, I'm sorry, uh, we started a, uh, discussion regarding the feral animal communities here, uh, in town, uh, that also, uh, boiled over into a number of other issues, but predominantly having to do with the feral cat issue, feral cats that exist here within the City of Yukon. We have a number of people in town, uh, that, uh, are very sympathetic towards the, uh, cat community, and we have a number of people who are very against the local cat community. So we sat down three separate meetings and went through the local ordinance, which had not been worked on for a period of over twenty-plus years. And, uh, through that, we, uh, looked at all of the other things that other communities are doing. I looked at about twenty-plus other communities and several other ordinances around the country, uh, which also included Oklahoma City. And we presented that to all of the people there, and we basically had, uh, about thirty people at the first, uh, two meetings, twenty at the, at the third meeting, I believe it was, and then we had about thirteen or fourteen at the last meeting. Uh, the bottom line was, is that we totally revamped an awful lot of the ordinance. All of those recommendations were all put together into an ordinance package, which then was given to the, uh, lawyer here in town. Mr. Sigler's here tonight, uh, presented that to him, and we, uh, went ahead and redid the ordinance, and of course, that is what you see here this evening. And we, of course, we brought it before the city because it represents the efforts of about thirty-five to forty separate people putting their input together to re-look at the ordinance and, uh, put together something that we believe will move Yukon forward into the next, uh, into the next probably twenty years or so. Hopefully, we'll redo the ordinance before another, another twenty years. Uh, to say the least, the majority of the conversations were pretty spirited. Uh, you know, it, quite obvious, we have people who are, like I said, really do care about the cat communities. We have a lot of people who do not care about the cat communities, and therefore was just a, a nuisance to them. But in order to accomplish that, we came up with a plan, that's a plan, an ordinance which allows the opportunity for both communities to live together well in Yukon. The second part of that, it also ensures the safety of Yukon at a higher level than it currently is today. That is, that the animals will be spayed and neutered, uh, that the animals will be, receive vaccinations, uh, in the feral community. And that, in, in point of fact, all of the, uh, communities, uh, over time should actually dwindle and would be, give us the opportunity through our police department, the Humane Society out here, to control the, uh, the feral community here, uh, in Yukon, and do it in such a way that it really protects the people and everything that are here. Prior to that, we had virtually no control, uh, in that we had feeding going on at several points around the city, eight or nine locations where the animals were fed, uh, caused some, uh, fairly serious problems. Uh, all of those were pretty well, uh, discussed out and, uh, and got the two sides, uh, together to a point where they felt like it was pretty important to our city to still protect animals that, that were cared for or cared about. And then the other side of that is to protect people's property and not have wild animals, uh, running around town, uh, indifferently and, and doing damage to other peoples. Uh, we successfully put together a package, the ordinance that you see before you're here today, that, uh, well, to be perfectly frank, no one liked all of it. And, uh, no one was real excited about everything, but we did find both commonality on both sides that, that people could live with it. It would give the police department the opportunity to have the rules and regulations they need to supervise the, uh, program properly and, uh, give us an opportunity to know actually how big a problem that we had. There's reporting that was required with that, so that we would know every year how many cats we actually did have in town and communities. Uh, it would allow the cats to be spayed, neutered, uh, and, uh, and, and returned to their colonies so that they would not proliferate. Uh, it also would make sure that the animals don't just starve to death. Uh, the other, the other side of that too, it also gives us a mechanism whereby if we do have animals that are offending people's property, we had a way of taking care of those and, uh, and once again, giving the police the authority to do that. So felt like it was in the interest of, uh, certainly the thirty people that were there, uh, although not everyone liked everything that was here, uh, that it was an opportunity for us to provide a look forward over the next twenty years. And to guarantee this, well, I won't say guarantee the safety, because there'll always be wild animals, but certainly to provide a much higher level of safety, because the cats would be inoculated, uh, against rabies. They would be tipped, in other words, they would be sterilized so that they wouldn't go out and create new litters. They would have an overseer that if litters did occur for some other animals coming into the community, uh, that their litters would be removed fairly quickly and put up for adoption. Uh, and, and once again, uh, we wouldn't be just indiscriminately destroying animals, because, you know, uh, somebody just doesn't like, uh, the other side of that, uh, the folks that had had harm done, and there were several instances where people had had harm done to their property, uh, certainly had animals, uh, coming on to their property that they didn't want there. Uh, and, uh, it provided us with an opportunity that, uh, to actually, uh, help out with that, certainly by the reduction in the community sizes and that sort of thing. So that's what went on. We had, uh, three probably eight and a half to nine hours of testimony, uh, where people expressed all of their opinions. We took the entire old ordinance apart, which had been in place for twenty, I guess it was twenty-two years, Mike, does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and, and bring us and update us into the twenty-first century. And, uh, once again, that was the effort that we put forth, uh, to try to bring something to the council. It was, uh, all encompassing, and that it, uh, provided the opportunities for people who are abusing the program, uh, for, uh, citation activities to prevent that, uh, but also to take care of the people who gen- have a genuine interest in, in saving animals as well. So I won't say any more than that. There's a couple of the folks that were here uh, that, that sat through the meetings. Uh, certainly, I, I guess I, probably the best thing to do is to leave it there, but I, I wanted everybody to clearly understand that it is an all com- it, I, I'll say it this way. It's a comprehensive plan in a way that has three basic parts to it, three or four basic parts, and that is the ordinance structure is set up to give the police department a controlling arm over the Humane Society in dealing with these kinds of problems. It provides the city with an opportunity once again to count and see how large the feral population is. Uh, and it also gives us an opportunity to understand our problems. Currently, there are no tax dollars being spent on the feeding of feral communities, and there will not be. Uh, that's all done by the individual people who care about the animals individually. And so they would be registered with the Pets and People Organization, Humane slash Humane Society, and that they would go about their business. And then if we have problems, we take it up with them. There are opportunities in there to clean up, uh, any difficulties that occur as a result of that. And so that's where the ordinance goes. So with that, I think I'll, I, I, if it stopped, there's other questions that people have or, uh, other folks that wanna, uh, express their views and everything else, uh, please feel free. That's where it went. And that's, uh, we had our last meeting about two weeks ago, I guess, and now it's before us.
Here is, um, how I'd like to handle the discussion this evening. Um, I have one question, and then for Mr. Sigler, and then from there, I would like to turn it over and see if there is any public input, and we'd limit that to three minutes, like with the other gentleman earlier this evening. And then we'll go from the council, and we'll go from this end back down, uh, and let Mr. McCarron, if he would like to have a closing, some sort of closing remarks, but if you have ca- if you have questions for Mr. McCarron as you go through, but we'll start from this end and go back down. So that's, that's the order that we'll take. Mr. Sigler, the question that I had before we begin our discussion is there are actually three different items, four if you include the emergency on the agenda. There's a resolution, there's an ordinance, and there's the rule and regulation. Do you mind explaining to the council and also to the people that are here tonight, the difference between a resolution and ordinance and the rules, and why all three of those are necessary? Are, are they necessary? Why, would, do you mind sharing that with us, please?
The, they're not absolutely necessary, but it's the m- my best way of trying to get across the, the message. The ordinance becomes part of our ordinance books, part of our code of ordinances, and it can be changed, of course, by a vote of the council member. Resolu- but then it has to go back and it gets published again, and it takes a while sometimes for the publisher of our code of ordinances to get the new information out. So if a person wanted to know what the fee was to adopt a, an animal at the animal shelter, and the council recently changed that by ordinance, they can go to the library or the website and find that out. Whereas resolution, we can change it, publish it, and post it right away. So what we've done here is we've taken the, uh, ordinance, the animal ordinance. This animal ordinance pertains to dogs, cats, horses, swine, pot-belly pigs, fowl, chickens, animals within the limits of the City of Yukon. And that's what Mr. McCarron was addressing initially. That ordinance, chapter fourteen, animals, had not really been updated or addressed, brought into the twenty-first century, so to speak, ever. It's, it was in its current form for a couple of decades. So it desperately needed some attention. And we upgraded it, thanks to the help of council member McCarron and, and his group. We've got some better definitions. We've got better, uh, definitions for the judge, for instance, for him to make a determination as to whether or not an animal is vicious. We've got better definitions for animal control. We've got better definitions and, uh, more definite violations. That this shall be a violation, that shall not be a violation. So that's cleaned up. Then what I did was I took all of the fees associated with the, the animals, like I say, the, that, and put those over into the resolution. What does it cost to take your animal to the shelter? What does it cost to adopt an animal, so forth? The ordinance itself addresses feral animal communities, and it actually prohibits, uh, a person from, uh, feeding feral animals. The ordinance does. There's exceptions for one feral animal. And then that animal, uh, it has to be spayed or neutered. The person who feeds it accepts legal responsibility for it, and the person who feeds it makes, has to make a good faith effort to get that animal, uh, spayed or neutered or surrendered over to services. The ordinance also provides for a, the ability for the council to adopt rules and- The ordinance also provides for a, the ability for the council to adopt rules and regulations for feral cat communities. And that is the third segment or the fourth segment that you're seeing on your agenda is proposed rules and regulations. In the event that the council desires to adopt those rules and regulations, they're already set out. Those rules and regulations provide for sponsors, like a humane society or Pets and People or so forth. They provide for caretakers of the colony, as council member McCarran said. They provide for capturing, spay or neuter, trap and release type of activities, tipping of the years and so forth. If the council desires to have and allow feral cat communities, then the council would adopt those rules and regulations. But by adopting the ordinance, the council does not necessarily commit itself to allowing feral cat communities, colonies, within the city limits.
Okay, so without the rules and regulations, so explain that one more time, the rules and regulations regarding feral cats versus the ordinance.
In the ordinance...
And what portion of the ordinance? Do you recall?
I do.
Fourteen forty-four. Forty-four.
Well, forty-four is the single animal, feral animal. Toward the end is the... Section fourteen dash fifty. City Council of the City of Yukon may promulgate rules and regulations pertaining to feral cat communities. Not required to, it may promulgate. So, if the council desires, they may promulgate rules and regulations. On your agenda are proposed rules and regulations if you desire, as a body, to adopt or promulgate rules or regulations, which would then allow feral cat communities, colonies.
Okay. Let's start our discussion first without involving the community. For Mr. Sigler's comments, Mr. Opitz, let's go down in case anyone has anything. Mr. Opitz, do you have any questions for Mr. Sigler?
I don't have any question for Mr. Sigler, but I would, first of all, like to compliment...
Well, I'm going to go back. We'll do that in a minute. I just want to do Sigler. We'll go out and then we'll come back and have your longer version, okay? Do you have a question for Mike?
I do. Just to clarify, we could pass the resolution, which, by the way, we're not doing in order because that's seven and we're on eight, but we could pass the resolution, and all we're passing regarding that resolution are the fees and fines that were separated from the ordinance. Is that right?
No. Kind of right. But the ordinance that's proposed and the reason we're taking it out of order is because your current ordinance has those fees in the ordinance. And so, if you adopt the new ordinance, the new ordinance says that the fee will be set by resolution in the council. So, you're just moving a moment.
So, if we, if eight, for example, is, the resolution is not approved, the ordinance is not approved, then the resolution becomes meaningless.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gerba.
Or I think that's just actually answered my question. So, basically, there's no way on item number seven, which is actually resolution twenty thirteen dash one, if item eight, which is ordinance number twelve eighty-six, does not pass, that resolution becomes null and void.
Well, it, we don't need it.
Correct.
At that juncture, if the item eight fails, then we don't need the resolution at all because in the current ordinance, it sets forth the fees for...
It's tied to, correct.
Fees for dropping off animals and so forth. So, they're tied together.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarran, questions for Mr. Sigler?
I, you know, I think Mike understands, you know, we went over the, all of it pretty clearly and everything, you know, to be able to redo the fees and everything else and still not complicate the process any, you know, a great deal, but allow us to change certain parts of the verbiage and also put it in a position where if the communities and stuff eventually disappear or go away, we also don't have to go away and redo the ordinance for that either, or then also we could come back and reinstate it later without having to totally redo an ordinance as a direct result of that. So, I, you know, I think Mike's, you know, there's some, there's obviously some jeopardy to that. The bottom line is, is that there's also an opportunity for us to streamline our laws, which we don't typically do a very good job of, but to streamline things in such a way that we can adopt and adapt later in the process. That's...
At this time, I want to open it up to the public. If there is someone here that is a resident of the city of Yukon, if you would come forward, state your name, your address, and then you have three minutes to discuss your matter with the council.
Thank you, Mayor Alberts. My name is Jody Harland. I live at four two six Poplar Avenue. I was one of four co-founders of Pets and People, and I was here the last time that ordinance was changed in order to comply with spay-neuter laws. So, I've been active in pet rescue...
For twen- over twenty years.
For forty years, to tell you the truth, and I won't disclose my age.
You're not that old, ma'am.
Thank you. I like you already. I want to thank certainly Councilman McCarran for his work in bringing two communities with very different ideas together and writing a coherent law, and Attorney Sigler for separating it the way he did. I submit to you that feral cat colonies exist whether you pass a law or whether I feed them or not. What happens when I don't spay and neuter them, and I've literally spent thousands of dollars, my husband's an accountant, too, feeding, and if you feed them, you must spay or neuter them, or you create a crisis for your neighbors, for the cats themselves, for the community. We have people who think they're doing good, who do not spay, but they feed. This ordinance controls that, and I oppose it. It's not humane, and it creates a problem for the city of Yukon, animal control, pets and people, and the neighbors, and sometimes businesses. If you feed, you're messing with the laws of natures, and you must neuter. That's what I do. I have a national grant from Alley Cat Alley to neuter cats in Yukon at their expense. The city of Oklahoma City had a five-year grant. Every feral cat colony, every feral cat brought in was free. That's how they controlled their problem. Punishing people who volunteer is not the way to go. Punishing the cats is not the way to go. The problem exists with irresponsible people who cut them loose, who, without sustenance, who don't feed and who don't take care of them. This ordinance does some other good things other than setting a platform to control feral colony managers and the colonies themselves through these volunteers that are an extension of animal control at their own expense on their own time. This law deals with tethering animals in the back of pickups so they don't jump out and cause wrecks. It deals with tying them up. It limits the amount of time a person can tie a dog or cat in bad weather. It does a lot of really good things that I support. And it's not perfect, as Councilman McCarran said, but it's a really good start for cleaning up rules that extend beyond feral cats. I think it was smart to separate the fees so those could be changed and to pull out the regulations that affect the feral cat colonies so that those could be upgraded and changed without having to involve the whole ordinance. And I hope that you'll, anyone that is opposed, I hope they read the ordinance. I know the council did, of course, and the other documents, but members of the audience that might want to argue with me, I read it. Did you? Before you dispute it, make sure you know what you're talking about and how it'll affect your community. It's not just about wild cats. It's about humane treatment of animals and controlling the problem with wild cats through spaying and neutering and feeding them. They don't reproduce, and they don't eat birds, and they don't get in the trash can at the same rate. I think that's a good thing, and I hope you do, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to address the council about the matter? Yes, ma'am.
Ann Zacker, three oh nine Vicki Drive, Yukon.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Ann Zacker, Z-A-C-K-E-R. I just noticed in reading what you referred to, it was really, looked to me well done. A lot of things were addressed, and I noticed there was going to be consideration to people whose property would be used to locate any feral animal that was in the wrong place. I never saw anything that gave permission in the reverse. If someone's going to have feral colonies, I didn't see anything at all about the city or personnel communicating that to the surrounding area wherever these colonies would be. Seems like that'd be fair. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Could I speak for just maybe one moment? I'm not actually a, live in the city limits. I live right outside of the city limits, and I've been involved in every one of the meetings that we've had and instrumental in...
Mr. Sigler, was...
No.
I apologize.
No problem.
Anyone else that's a, lives in Yukon that would like to address the council about the pending mandar? Seeing none, then we'll move to the council discussion. Mr. Opitz.
First of all, I really want to thank Councilman McCarron for all the work and all the hours and all the time that he's put into this project on feral cats and our animals and doing all the things that he's done. I really believe that we're headed in the right direction. But I really feel like that I need more time for review on what I'm looking at so that I'm sure that I make a good decision on this, and I suggest that we table it at least till the next meeting. I just need more time for review for myself to be sure of what we have.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, I'm going to also start by thanking Mike. He's put a lot of effort into trying to get this right, something that'll make everybody in the community happy, and I respect the efforts, and I do want to thank you for it. I do want to mention just a couple of things. Because Ms. Harland mentioned birds, I'm just going to read one quote that I have here. This is, "I detest the killing of cats and dogs or anything else," says George Fenwick, president of the American Bird Conservatory, "but this is out of control, and there may be no other answer." Teresa Sargon-Peters, animal care and control specialist, says, "It's mystifying that anybody would say that a painless quick end is cruelty when the other option is slow, lingering, painful. Deaths from people, attacks from dogs, hit by cars, or dying slowly of disease." Those are quotes from national people that are involved in these exact situations. So, I also want to acknowledge that the animal control ordinance was definitely in need of update, and I think that the, notice I did call it an animal control ordinance, not a feral cat ordinance, because I think by calling it a feral cat ordinance, we're narrowing the scope of the true purpose of what this ordinance is. And I do believe that most of the language in the ordinance is on point. I think it's a very good job of, it'll do a good job of regulating animal control in Yukon. My issue is with singling out, the singling out of feral cats with a proposed plan to initiate, you know, the TNR and the colonies and so on, a plan that is controversial in its effectiveness at best, and no disrespect, disrespect to our citizens that helped put this together because I appreciate their effort as well. But, you know, when you look at other sources, it's not as black and white in its effectiveness as what it appears or what's been presented. I also, you know, proponents of the plan, they also say that it's not going to cost the city any money. The sponsors, et cetera, they're going to absorb the cost, but the reality of it is that the oversight and enforcement falls back into the city staff, actually, our police department, animal control. That is not free, that it's going to cost the city something for a program that really I don't think has been proven to be effective. If the citizens of Yukon decide this is the way to go, it can be implemented, I believe, without being singled out in the ordinance. I mean, after all, what else do we single out then? If we're going to single out feral cats, for example, we have, we have wild turkeys running around town. We have geese in every pond that you see. We have a skunk infestation. What, do we come back every year and redo our ordinance to include all these other animals as well? I think we could implement, if it turns out that this program that has been presented, I think it can be implemented without being part of this animal control ordinance. So, I think that's something we ought to look at. And frankly, in my view, if you are feeding the cats, you assume ownership of those animals, and you should be subject to the earlier clauses within this same ordinance. If you're feeding them, they're yours. It, I do believe, as Rick said, I think that we should consider deleting that portion, and when I say that portion, I'm referring to the portion that line items out, the strategy and oversight of the feral cat colonies. I think that should be deleted, and then we should re, take another look at this ordinance as it's presented. Because, again, going back, I believe that if it turns out that that is the best and most effective way to handle the problem, that can be established without having to include it within this, this particular ordinance.
Is there a specific section that you're referencing?
Yeah, the, the feral cat colonies and procedures, that's the section that I'm referring to.
Within the ordinance.
Within the ordinance. Within this revised edition of the ordinance. Because obviously, the ordinance as it stands doesn't include anything to do with it, so I am referring to this revision, the updating. No. No, if, I do believe that if we're going to, if we're going to try to vote on it tonight, that, well, I'm just not going to say it. I'm just going to say if it comes to a vote, I'll vote my conscience and research. And this isn't something, you mentioned, you know that we read the ordinance. I not only read the ordinance, but I did enough research from national organizations to create the doubt in my, in my mind as to the effectiveness of the program. So...
Miss...
I've probably said it. I've probably said enough.
Mr. Gerba.
At the risk of redundancy, I tend to agree with the other two councilmen. I think, first of all, I applaud you for all of the hard work. Ninety-five percent of this, in my opinion, is just fantastic. I think you've done a lot of great work, and it's really going to help out with all animals across the board. But the only issue that I really have is essentially the same thing as Mr. Smith just talked about, singling out cats. I oppose the language of colonies and the cat caregivers. I think we have the same goal in mind. We just are disagreeing on maybe some of the details. So, what I would suggest is getting together to do a couple minor edits and then vote on it also. And let me say, in the future, I'm not opposed to the city doing, doing something financial where you can help out with a spay and neuter program. I really do think that it's possible for us to work together on this and reach, reach that goal that we're both looking, looking after, so. But at this point, with the way the wording is in here right now, I've got a problem with that also.
Mr. Sigler, it's just a point of order, then it's, it sounds like a couple of councilmen have suggested that maybe this matter be tabled. So, that would require a motion, and then Mr. McCarran would have to consider that...
You could do it that way. It's an amendment to the motion, or you can just go ahead and take a vote on the motion that's on the floor. If it fails, then somebody else could make a motion to table it or continue it indefinitely.
Would someone like to, could I ask a question, please?
If we, if we vote on it, then we're not really going to be tabling it, are we? I mean, we'd have to, it'd have to be re-presented, put back on the agenda...
It would have to be put back on the agenda, and so, which could be easily done.
Yeah, I understand that, but I guess I just want a clarification. If we, if we vote on it and it, let's say it fails, then we're not really going to be tabling it. We'd be counting on, it'd be getting revised in whatever way is done and then brought back. Okay?
Well, at that point, I make a motion that we defer the vote on this item, on item number eight.
You would have to ask Mr. McCarran if he would table it. Here's, let me ask this. If we table it, we could ask, then it'd be sent back for study session for us to have this discussion. It sounds like the council would like to work on it, I understand. And if we table it, would that allow us to set a time?
It would technically, though, when you table something, it's got to come back at the next meeting, and so you would postpone indefinitely or just let the motion fail and work on it next session.
It's my, I don't want to sound redundant, but I still stand by... It, it's my, I don't wanna sound redundant, but I still stand by my suggestion that we consider going ahead, making our, uh, our vote. And if we need to re-address it, I mean, as our city attorney said, it would take little or no effort to get it back on the agenda. And that would allow us time to, to consider alternatives to what is already printed a- and determine whether it even needs to be a part of the ordinance. I mean, is it possible that it can be done without it being part of the ordinance? Because again, we're singling out a certain, a certain species of wild animal.
First, first of all, yeah, let me, let me address a little bit of that. The, uh, the primary issue here is, revolves around what's been going on with damage and people being bothered and all of that. And what we have is an opportunity to put in place a group of people who have been more than willing over the past ten, twelve, fifteen years to put out their own time, their own resources, and everything else to help the city of Yukon take care of an animal problem that we have with no cost to the city.
Well, that, that's not reality, though, Mike.
Certainly it is.
Well, hold up, whoa, 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 whoa. We're not gonna have an argument, we're gonna have a discussion, okay? So, Mr. Smith, question?
The point is, who's, who is, who is taking care of the feral cat problem now?
Okay, hold on, yeah, let's not have an, you can, I wanna, I've been, wait a minute, Nick. Hold on. I intentionally did this in order for us to remain orderly. So, and Grayson's reminded me that we're not supposed, so you have the floor. And if we would like to go back and, all right, so, but...
Well, I, you know, the, the basic point is, is that we have a group of people that has come forward for over a long period of time that has taken care of this problem so it hasn't become more serious than it has in other areas where other towns have had to address it previously and very forcefully in some cases. But the bottom line to it is, is we have a group of people that will come out and do it for free. You know, s- some of the folks that are out there have spayed and neutered countless numbers of, of, of animals and had them get their shots and, you know, and, and without just having to indiscriminately destroy the animals. You will never be able to destroy the cat population. New York City is actually one of the worst in the country right now for feral cats. You wouldn't believe that. Why? Because they have garbage on the streets. And as long as they're, unless you control the feeding and all of those activities and put them in a controlled environment, the problem is gonna continue. It's not going to go away. We can only mitigate the problem and choose to control it or choose not to control it. And that's the option that we, that's been presented here to you tonight. So, you know, if by saying, "We're just gonna cut this piece out of the legislation," okay? That's like saying we could legislate against hurricanes and say Sandy, Sandy Hook up in New Jersey, you know, isn't gonna get flooded. It's not gonna happen. Nature is gonna continue to take its course. The animals, it, and matter of fact, I personally believe it's gonna get worse as the housing developments continue and they encroach on all of the open lands that are around us. We simply are going to see more and more animals that are going to be in this kind of a condition. And I had hoped that we would get to the point where we looked forward enough to say that this is a problem that we want to solve now and not kick the can down the road to hope that we can solve it later on. So, that's, you know, that's my answer to your question. The feral cat issue is not going away. Now, it's a question is, do we want, as a city council, to fund another twenty officers in the police department to run around or, and clean up animals? Or would you want to sit and be in a position where you have people that truly love the animals, take care of them, put them in a decent situation? That's just an option that we have before us today.
Okay. Mr. Smith, briefly?
Very briefly. Um, I, I wanna make myself clear. Um, I do not have the answer to our feral cat issue in Yukon. This may or may not turn out to be the right way. If it is determined that it is the right way, I don't believe that it has to be part of the ci- of this animal control ordinance in order to be implemented. Okay? Um, embellishing that we would need twenty officers to, to, uh, resolve the problem, uh, you know, that's, I know you were just trying to make a point, but the reality is that the oversight and enforcement, although there is a chain of command as it's laid out in that section of the ordinance, the, the, uh, enforcement, the ultimate enforcement is by the city of Yukon. To the point that our animal control officers, if they were to pick up an animal, would have to try to identify that animal by the colony it lives in and give a matter of a couple of days for that cat to be returned to that colony. So, but to say that the city was not involved in it is, is not realistic. It's not real. That's, that's what I meant by the comment I said a little bit ago. So, don't, don't think, um, that I'm trying to say that, uh, this is not the right procedure. I just don't think it really needs to be part of this ordinance. And I do believe, much as some of the other councilmen have said, that, um, uh, more time to review other options might be a good thing. Uh, but it, again, I think ultimately, we wouldn't have to, as a council, sweat it so much if it were not part of the ordinance. My humble opinion is, I personally think the ordinance probably would've, uh, had a good chance of being passed had the feral cat colony section not been part of it. Now, Mr. Segler might be able to clarify it for me.
It's not part of it.
Yeah, that's what I, that...
No, 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 the rules may be adopted so that item nine on your agenda are the rules and regulations as they pertain to feral cat. If the council decides to adopt it.
Right. And i- if we choose to do that, we are at least indirectly endorsing that program.
Well, hey, let me, can I ask a?
I think we've got a little bit of confusion.
There's section fourteen fifty.
And maybe that's why we need to go back to study session.
Right, right, that's, that's what I think is, I think that...
Everybody's not on the same page.
My, my point is, if we, if we vote to approve the ordinance, revision of the ordinance as it is, um, it's gonna be pretty easy to look at that and say, "Well, these five councilmen, councilmen stand behind," or at least those that voted in favor of it, "stand behind cat colonies and the structure and..."
Contemplated.
So on, exactly. So that, that's what I mean by indirectly endorsing the, the ordinance as it's written. So, I guess my question is, i- is there some way that, uh, that, am I wrong in saying that that plan could be implemented without being part of the ordinance?
Sure. I mean, I can fix it.
Well, and that's...
Whatever you got.
I don't wanna oversimplify, but that's my point from the start.
Do it, I can, I can work it out.
I, I, Mike, I guess you'll give me the same answer because I have the same question. So if we table it, because I think that this is, it, I think a discussion would settle and resolve some of this because it's fourteen fifty, is that the only thing in this ordinance that deals with, deals with feral, feral cats? Fourteen fifty?
No, fourteen forty-four does as well. This one allows fourteen...
Okay, but that prohibits the feeding of feral cats.
But there's an exception.
But there's an exception.
Exception, a person may feed a...
Feral, a feral animal.
A feral, yeah, a feral, not a colony, but a feral cat, a wild cat.
Or, uh, any other feral animal.
Okay. So here, I'm back to my question again. I think that it, th- there's probably some more discussion. And, and I know everyone, some people are getting tired of this discuss- discussion going back and forth, but could we continue to have this style of discussion in our planning session? Or would, is that prohibited, Mr. Segler?
No, it's, it's a study session and in so long as it's a posted agenda item, we certainly can.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, as long as we can have this meaningful discussion, then either, so if we table it, just so, uh, all the gentlemen understand, if we table this, then it has to, this has to come up for a vote at the next meeting? That's what I don't understand. It, it, are you allowed to give us an opinion procedurally as our attorney?
That would be tabling, but there's another way to do it, is you just postpone it indefinitely.
Okay.
And if you postpone it indefinitely, then it can come up back.
Be amended?
Well, we can amend anything.
Okay, so then do we need to ask Mr. McCarron?
To amend a motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay.
Allow discussion, further discussion at a posted meeting.
Okay. May I make that motion?
Sure.
Mr. McCarron, would you consider amending your motion to postpone this indefinitely to allow us to have an additional discussion at the planning session?
So be it, because I think it really needs to come, uh, to a hot, much higher level of clarity, uh, than where we are at this moment. That's, I can tell you that, because I don't, you know, the, can I comment here or should I just say yes or no?
Well, I think just yes or no at this point, then we can discuss it.
Okay, I, I, I would say yes, I would accept the amendment, uh, to...
So do we need to...
Councilmember Opitz made the second. And so if...
Second?
If you were to accept the amendment, uh, you can vote on the amended motion, which is to ta- or to postpone indefinitely to allow further discussion at a posted meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, call, any, do we need to have discussion or have we had plenty?
I've got it.
Well, I thought Mr. Opitz seconded it.
We got it.
I have a comment yet, too.
We got it. Somebody can call the vote?
Okay.
You can have discussion, just depends.
Yeah, go, I mean, go ahead, but I, you know, if, if we do consider this to be a work session item, you know, I would want everyone come prepared to, to discuss it.
Okay.
With, you know, to actual changes to the specific ordinance itself as to how we would go about that. Because I, I'm not at the point where I know of a, a better way to do this without other serious consequences. So, I'll leave, I'll leave it there, so.
Call the roll, please. Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
That means that we can leave A, seven, and nine, just pull them from the agenda and go to the next.
Item seven, item eight A, and item nine will be pulled from the agenda. The next item for consideration will be item ten, and that's consider approving a second amended, amendment and ratification of the city manager's employment agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, discussion. Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The next item is eleven, that's consider approving a fee in lieu of detention in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for Vandamit Avenue Baptist Church as recommended by the city engineer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, discussion. Call the roll, please. Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Next item is twelve, and that's the city manager's report information purposes only.
Very quickly, um, I'll point out that the sales tax collections, uh, were, uh, down for the, uh, month, uh, leaving us at a six point eight six percent increase year to date. Uh, if you have l- taken the opportunity to look at your charts, you will also notice that that is an abnormal action for this particular time of the year. I would anticipate that we're gonna have to have a new line next month on the, uh, on the chart because we'll catch up on the late filers as well as it is going to be Christmas reporting period. So, with that said, I'll also tell you that use tax, one of the taxes that we do not budget because of its volatility, uh, did go down, actually over the same period last month or last year at twenty-one point three nine percent down, leaving us at a twenty-nine point four eight percent increase for the year. Still, all in all, very good economic numbers. Uh, the other thing I'd, I'd like to, uh, remind everybody about is that, uh, our Parks and Recreation Department seems to never rest. And, uh, that is also true for the month of February. Uh, for those of you that are into competition and view yourselves as a free throw shooting artist, Nick?
Not if you saw me shoot.
At one P M., uh, this coming, uh, Saturday at the Community Center and the Jackie Cooper Gym, there'll be a free throw shooting contest. Uh, the winners of those two events at either gym will then be, uh, at, uh, a Yukon High School basketball game where they will then shoot to become the Yukon champion of free throws, where we will go on and take on the dreaded Mustang Broncos at the Yukon Mustang High School Basketball Game to, to determine the true champion. Uh, also, one of the most looked for events each year is the daddy-daughter dance. Uh, that will occur on February the second, that's Saturday, February the second. There, there are two dances today, or this year. I don't know how much longer we're gonna be, actually be able to keep it at two dances, but, uh, the first dance occurs at, uh, five to six thirty with the second dance from seven to eight thirty. Uh, it's always a great event and, uh, I encourage everybody to, uh, take your daughter to the daddy-daughter dance. And finally, there is the chocolate, chocolate festival. Uh, there will be twenty booze serving various kinds of chocolate at the D R C. And that's on, uh, Saturday, February the ninth from one to three. If you haven't been, you really ought to go to the Chocolate Festival. It's a lot of fun and I, uh, I encourage everybody to go. Um, we've had a, uh, we've had a really good first couple of months of the, uh, or couple of weeks of the, of the year. Um, I know that the staff is extremely excited about the opportunity, uh, in a couple of weeks to receive their budget work papers where we start.
Sorry.
I'm sure they're thrilled.
At least there won't be any cuts asked for this year, will there be? Will there be any cuts asked for this year?
I would not anticipate.
I thought you said cats.
I'm not gonna say it, but, uh, it's been a good, uh, first couple of weeks, um, and we're, we're looking forward to a great year. Uh, lots of exciting things going on all across the city and, uh, we're looking forward to a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that nice report. Item thirteen is new business, seeing none, council discussion. And I don't need to remind the gentleman, but I will, that we should not talk about the cat because that would be a violation of our open meeting. So, except for thank you for what you've done, Mr. McCarron, any council discussion. Mr. Gerba?
No, Mr. Merrill, I have anything.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, just, just a very few things. One thing I would like to say is I do agree with, uh, Mr. Turnius who spoke earlier that I think, uh, reinstituting our reserve officer program here in town, especially in the days that we live is, uh, if it's a feasible thing to do, I think it's a, a good idea. Um, I would like to commend the city manager and the staff for their, uh, uh, improvement in the budgetary system. Obviously, that six point eight percent growth came from somewhere and, uh, we appreciate it. Um, I would also like to say that, um, I, I appreciate very much the, uh, passion within the men on this council and their ability to, uh, discuss items with a full understanding that, uh, it's okay to agree to disagree if it comes to that. So, uh, I want, uh, just so everyone knows, I do in fact respect the opinions and passion of the men on the council.
Mr. Opitz?
I believe this city's headed in the right direction, is what I believe. Uh, speaking of Grayson, the six point six percent that you referred to, now that was November, is that right?
That's actually a year-to-date number.
Year-to-date?
Yes.
Okay, so you, but you were reporting for November 'cause December...
That's the November tax collection, that's correct.
Okay, so we still have the Christmas season to come in, so that could be really, really good. And I believe it will be. Uh, one other thing that nobody has mentioned, I don't believe, is the Yukon Chamber of Commerce banquet. That banquet is gonna be held on February third at the Palace. Uh, this community has so many events, it's just numerous, you can't think of them all. But, that is a great event that the Chamber holds. It's a great fundraiser for the Chamber, but it's a great event to be at. Uh, it's been full every year. It's denim and diamonds, fits me to a T. And I asked my wife, "What do I wear?" Well, I don't know, I guess denim and diamonds, huh? But anyway, it's gonna be a great event, we're gonna have a lot of fun. So, come out and be a part of it. There'll be an auction toward the end of it and, uh, you'll be able to get some great buys on some great stuff, so come spend a little money because it is tax deductible. All right, Mayor?
Amen. With no other business for this council.
What's that? Oh, I, yeah, I did actually have one comment.
No, please.
No, please.
Didn't involve the cat. I did want to thank, thanks to the, once again, for hosting us through all of the things that we did. And I did want to point out, you know, a lot of folks don't necessarily realize how hard it is to budget and do things properly. And Grayson and his staff did a good job this year. I think that's more than notable. And I also wanted to really congratulate everybody tonight on voting on the money, the funding for the flume back in the back of the old Ranchwood addition. It's been a problem that's been going on, some flooding back there for over a pretty extended period of time. And to get that fixed is, I think, something pretty nice and I'm glad that we finally got there on that. So with that, that's it.